I'd like to call this January 9th Councilwork session, regular meeting for order. Would everyone please rise for a moment of silence? Let's remember all those who passed away during the month. And also, let's remember Maria Chicoletti, who was a well-known first-olene in town, who passed away last night. She worked in the school district, and she made a major impact on a lot of children in our school district. If you read some of the testimonies today, you would see how a lot of kids said if it wasn't for her, they wouldn't have been in school, or they wouldn't have been where they were today. So, let's remember her in our prayers during this sad time. Please salute the flag.
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President.
Here.
Ms. Gorman.
Here.
Ms. Robbery.
Here.
Ms. Gordon.
Present.
Ms. Figueroa.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Portrangelo.
President.
Okay, so at this time, I'm going to open up the meeting to public participation. So if anybody would like to speak on anything, please go to the podium, say your name and
My name is Cheryl Galloway. I live in the 200 block of Radcliffe Street. I'm here because last week, there was a zoning meeting, which a number of the neighbors came to represent our views. And a number of us feel that we did not have our viewpoints represented. I'm here to talk about the fact that one of our council persons was not at the meeting, and one actually was active in a very...
So, not to interrupt yet, I just, I'll give you all the time you need. I know Mr. Gorman wanted to discuss this with council, and I know that this is a zoning issue. It's really not a council issue, because that's why we have a zoning board, it's really a court of law, where there's a court stenographer there, there's attorneys there, in case somebody wants to appeal decisions. I mean, any borough resident can appeal any zoning decision. But I don't know if Michael wants to, or you want to finish and then hear from your councilman and your councilwoman? Why, or you want, tell me how you want to handle it.
I would like to state the views of several of the residents.
Go ahead.
As I said, I live in the 200 block. I've lived there about 30 years, first as a renter, then as a homeowner. And a number of us just feel that we were not allowed to express our views. We feel like we were bullied. We feel like our council people did not represent us. And in fact, we were told that if we did not like the proceedings, if we didn't like the fact that there was going to be a variance granted regarding parking, that we should move and find a house with a driveway. I feel that that is just not acceptable, for neighbors to show up at a zoning meeting and be bullied by a council person.
Right. Do you want to finish, or you want Mr. Gorman to?
I would like to finish, if possible. Okay? Dr. Melinda Rotini was at the meeting. Unfortunately, she cannot be here now, because she's attending to patients. She has a statement, which I told her that I would read. And I think it represents the views of many of us on the street, on the 200 block of Radcliffe Street. Dr. Rotini says, "Good evening, council members. My name is Melinda Rotini. I've lived in Bristol Borough for over 60 years, with almost all of that time either living on or owning a business in the 200 block of Radcliffe Street. I have seen the parking situation become more critical within the past five years. It has become virtually impossible for residents of that block and the surrounding blocks to find a place to park if the theater has an event, if the restaurants are open, or when the church is having a service or function. Knowing that being able to park within a reasonable distance of your home is such a huge quality of life issue, my husband Angelo and I, as well as many who live in the immediate vicinity, attended the Bristol Borough zoning meeting on January 4th, where there was to be a petition for a variance to build a boutique nine-bed hotel in the middle of the 200 block of Radcliffe Street, an area zoned residential. The owner of the property was requesting that his hotel be exempt from the off-street parking mandate as stated in the borough zoning ordinance. After many neighbors stated their objection to the proposed parking variance during the public comment portion of the meeting, the committee man for the ward stood up and proceeded to bully those who had spoken up against the parking variance, saying if they didn't like it, they should move and buy a house with a driveway. The fact that an elected official would not only fail to represent the majority of his constituents, but would berate them at a public meeting was frankly shocking. A councilman from another ward, Mr. Greg Pezza, was also sworn in and spoke in support of allowing the hotel to proceed without sufficient off-street parking, stating that he was sure we could all work together to come up with a solution to the parking problem. This is why I am addressing council tonight. I wanted it to be entered into the record that assurances was made at the zoning here by Mr. Pezza that the lack of parking would be addressed. I feel there's a critical need, as well as an obligation for the council, to address major quality of life issues for those who live in the borough, both homeowners and renters, and that those needs must be put ahead of any further business development that would bring more people and traffic into town without any global or overarching plan in place to protect the rights of the people who live here. Thank you for consideration. This is signed, Dr. Melinda Rotini. I have copies if the council would like it.
We'll enter that into our minutes. I'll take that letter when you're done.
Okay. I appreciate you listening, and I will give the letter for you. Thank you.
Give it to the chief.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak on that?
My name's Tom Murray. I live in the 200 block as well. I was also at this meeting, and that's exactly what happened. We were, the zoning board, for the two cases before, the two, before the case we were interested in, everyone was told to address the board. No, everyone was told never to turn and address the audience. They were chastised even for doing it. But in this case, for this meeting, both council members addressed us directly, trying to educate us, tell us how it's going to be fine, about how what we thought was incorrect and would be fine. And one told us that we should move if we didn't like it. Word for word. I would like to see the transcript, because it's word for word. I wish it was videotaped like this proceeding, because it would be unbelievable to you.
Well, there's definitely a transcript.
It should be on it, because he was sworn in before he said it.
Anybody else would like to speak?
Yes, hello. My name is Luz Ruiz. I also live in the 200 block of Radcliffe Street, and I was too present that day at the zoning meeting. And one of the things that really concerns me is to know that someone that is going to represent me and my concerns is a person that would say to, you know, to the residents, instead of taking the residents' concerns seriously and listen, and perhaps analyze the situation, and wait for more information and more research, that we are told that if we don't like the, what is happening, and we don't like the difficulty with the parking that we are having in our community, that we should, that we should go and buy a house with a driveway. I don't feel that that's a viable and fair thing to say, because for economical reasons, we, in my case, I love my home, I love my community, and I would like to stay there as long as I am able to. And it concerns me that someone who is supposed to represent me does not analyze the situation in the perspective that what is good for the town should also be good for its residents. And this is a project that has the potential to disrupt the safety and the peaceful enjoyment of my home, my community, and the surrounding community. And displacing the residents is not a viable solution. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I know we would like council to respond, and I just hope you don't leave. Just let everybody get a chance to discuss this, okay? So...
Can I say something first?
Go ahead.
I just want to let you guys know that I wasn't available, because I was sick. And I had spoken to Michael, and Michael and Greg were going to represent us. But me and him work in, there's three wards. So we work, he works in more of that area, and I work more in the other area. But if I would have been available, I would have been there. But it's not just about not representing you guys. I don't recall anybody trying to reach out to us and ask us, "No, listen, don't look at me like that, because I don't know you." I know Lucy, since we were in high school, but I don't recall anybody saying, "Betty, I really need you here, this is my concern." I'm just putting that out there. And I wasn't there because I was ill. My family, we were all sick, so...
Michael. So I'd like to start this off, first of all, by saying, it's not a secret, the councilman who we found is myself. If this, the first question that I would ask, if this was a concern, and before you assume that I was not there to represent you, I never heard from anybody. No one reached out to me to say...
This is ridiculous. I don't...
Well, no, let me finish like you've...
Why don't give everybody a chance to talk?
Yes. So, let's start there. If I am there to represent you, why didn't anyone come to me and say, "Hey, look, this is going on here. What is your thoughts on this? We need representation. How can we achieve this? How can we make this work?" The second thing is, and I will get the transcripts, and I will check into it for defamation, but I know absolutely did not say, "Then move." I did not say that. What I did say, despite what you said, and I am not a bully, okay? I was not there to bully, and there were people, we didn't attack you, it was the whole room. We turned, you go up to that corner. So here's the thing. This is about, we know that parking is an issue. It's been an issue for a long time. It's a, it's a borough issue. I live on Radcliffe Street. I live on Mill Street. I know what the parking is about. I don't need the comments that were made from, "Oh, he's from South Philly," or, you know, "He's a bully." I'm not. I'm not. But here's what my point is, that I will check into this, and I mark my words. What you accuse me of, and what I did, are two different things. To say that I was bullied, and not to have the, if I represent you, and you knew that, all of a sudden now, you all know that, why didn't you come to me to say, "Hey, look, Michael, this is going to be going on. What should we do? What should we do?" And you all got out there and basically said, "This is not good for me where I live with the parking." You all made it an issue with the parking. The zoning board didn't. The parking wasn't an issue. The two, the two, they were granted, listen, it was granted, no, it was granted that there were two conditions. That the property be assured that it's one property, and that there would be no full-time employee. Not once was that, then we'll get the transcripts and look at it, and you are very much mistaken.
Okay.
But for one another note, with that in mind, with council, all along, we've been dealing with the growth. So I don't think it's fair to put any businessperson and accuse them, and not let them move forward because of parking. There is, that's what, you live in the district where there's restaurants allowed, where there's, there's bars. What about doctors' offices? The banks? All that? So I think all of you needed to get your facts together, but what I, my first question, and I said to everyone in the borough, "Why didn't you come to me? You never did, you never reached out, and all of a sudden, I'm the bad guy." And I will check into this. And borough, we have been working on asking about, we know there's a parking problem. But the parking is no reason to stop the growth that we worked so hard in to make this town become something that it is. If we're going to stop the growth because of parking, there is no reason for that. And council's not going to let that happen, and no one's going to let that happen. But we are looking into what we could do to up everything from our meters to what other parking we can provide in town. And yes, what I indicated was, the only guaranteed parking in town is if you have a home that has a driveway. And not did I, you wait till I finish. And there is not one thing I did not say anything about, "Then move." That's, you're putting words in my mouth, that may have been how I felt, and I've said it before, but that was not said that night, and I will have, I will get my attorney to check into that, to get the transcripts to see about that. But don't go saying things that I did.
So, just, all right. I got something to say, but whatever you want to say, Tom, you want to go back to the podium? I don't want to get back and forth for...
Yes. That's not what this is about.
Right. But I want to give everybody an opportunity.
I don't believe that this is in any way representation. If you think that this is what representation looks like, I'd be surprised. All right? So if anybody in this room thinks that, we were going, we got a notice to go to a zoning board meeting, which we went to, right? We met council there, who we didn't know they were there, right? They just appeared. We didn't ask them to attend, we didn't, we weren't looking for your help. We were there to say what we felt.
Right.
Not for you to tell us we were wrong, or we could move, none of that. We weren't looking for that from you, but that's what you gave us, okay? So we went there specifically for, and saying you're going to sue me, that doesn't sound like bullying to anybody in this room. There should be.
Let me just...
You have issues.
Let me just give you my opinion. The borough knows there's a parking issue. There's no question. It's not only on Radcliffe Street, or Marcus Street, or Mill Street, it's on every street in town. And we've been looking at a lot of different options. Pocket parking, looking at new meter systems. Matter of fact, today, even prior to this decision, myself and the chief, and my son, who's the mayor, had a Zoom meeting today with a parking authority company that does a lot of different things, which he's going to explain about this whole new system and how we want to do things. But I think what Michael's saying is, we can't stop development in town. And we all want to see this town flourish, and we were born and raised here. There was a thing tonight, that people came in for another liquor license on Mill Street, next to Digger Dogs. They want to open up a steakhouse with another. So are we supposed to say we don't want this, because there's not enough parking in the parking lot? We need to figure out as a council, how to make our residents happy. It's a double-edged sword, and we need to figure a way to create new pocket parking or parking somewhere. That's our responsibility. But I do agree what Michael's saying is, we don't tell somebody, "We don't want you to open up a new restaurant or do something, because the borough can't provide parking." You go to New Hope, it's packed. You can't even find a parking place. We have a big lot down here, maybe it's not utilized right. So we are looking into different options, but we want you to understand, I understand where everybody's coming from. And, you know, we just need to figure this out. But give us an opportunity to try to make this right for everybody. That's just my opinion. I mean...
The zoning board should have stopped people from addressing us directly. They should have all, it was just not handled properly, that whole meeting, so...
But did you guys stand up and wish your opinion if you were against it?
Yes, yes. And we were sworn in when we did that. And at least, I don't know, five maybe? I don't know the number. Several people spoke about how horrible the parking situation was, but...
But I know you talked about the parking, but did you actually say, "As a resident of this street and a neighbor..."
Yes.
"...I'm against this property?"
Yeah, I think it was clear that we were against it, from what we were saying. That it didn't, we didn't want, the variance was for parking. There were two variances. One was about, about the, I forget what the first one was, but the second one was about parking. And it was about a variance to add additional spots, because there were only five spots in the back, one handicap, and because there were going to be nine units, there needed to be a certain amount of spaces out front. That's what the variance was for. There were comments made additionally to this, to requesting this variance, but it was all about parking. And everybody there was about how a hotel wasn't safe, there were safety issues, there were lots of concerns raised. But generally, the comments were about parking. And it was clear that we wouldn't be for it, from the way everybody was talking. So, and everyone else, the two hearings before us, all right, the two, they were all told that they had to address all of their comments to the board.
That's a zoning issue.
That was not done in the meeting we were in. Both Pezza and Gorman were allowed to address us all directly. It was irregular at best.
All right. Well, let's see if we can, give us a couple months to see if there's a way to try to look at this whole thing and see what's going on. And maybe we can meet...
That'd be great.
...with the owner of this property, and see if we can figure something out, maybe get more cars out back, or to get them off the street. I mean, I understand, every day, we have this issue with somebody coming in about they can't find a parking place, they can't unload their groceries, there's nowhere, they got to walk down, you know, two blocks to unload their car.
And maybe I wasn't there, but maybe zoning didn't address it the proper way. If you're actually telling us that, you know, the other people weren't allowed to talk to, you know what I mean?
People weren't allowed to talk, but what happened, but no one was, in the first two hearings, every witness was told to address everything to the board...
Yeah.
...and not to the audience. That was totally not done in the manner, so everybody...
Oh, we have to, we have to maybe speak to them, too.
Okay.
All right, so...
I would just like to add, since my name was brought up, I was at the meeting. I am not a councilman that represents your ward, but this council does represent the entire borough. And I was there to kind of express the general idea of what council was. And what I was there to express was that we, or I, I should say, and I think many believe that a hotel is a good thing, and that it's something that is needed, but parking is a real issue, and one that council is willing and wanting to deal with. I, I'm just a little concerned about where this has come, because I think we've lost sight of what the conversation is. And the conversation is about economic development, and this is almost exactly what I said that night, about economic development, and how that weighs compared to the quality of life of our residents, and we are aware of those issues, and we need to balance them. I will say, I'm a little disappointed in your representation of my presentation, because, let me finish, please, because you have thrown out a lot of anecdotes of what happened that night. And if you consider me saying, this is a complicated issue, one where I said jokingly, can even have you on the opposite side of an issue, of your family doctor, who I love, and a family friend, who I also love. If that's me addressing the crowd, then so be it. I think, I'll do that every time. And I'm disappointed in the way that that was represented.
Okay. I have no problem with what you said at the meeting, all right? Then anyway, the problem I have is that the board allowed you to address us during a hearing, when they didn't allow either of the two hearings before to have that happen. You, we were giving testimony, you were giving testimony, you wrote a letter from your father...
I did not.
Oh, you did not?
No.
Okay. A letter from your father was introduced.
It was.
So I...
But this is what's important, I just have to be honest, like, that was factually incorrect, what you just said.
But I, but I understand.
And again, I don't want this back and forth, because it's not, it's losing sight of what we're trying to accomplish here. But I think we just need to be very careful about what, what facts we're presenting in this conversation. So, thank you.
So, hopefully, you give us an opportunity to get back to you, and let's see if we could try to figure something out and make everybody happier. We good?
I just want to say one more thing.
Go ahead. Keep what, period.
I would like to say that this sounds like a very fantastic project for the community, for the good of the community. But I believe that the way that the project was presented to the community has a lot of lingering questions. A lot of questions were not answered. And I think that a project like this, that is going to impact the whole community, should be more transparent. And there was no transparency at that meeting. That's what I would like to say. Thank you.
We have everything everybody's talking about on record and on video, so... Everybody, Michael, I mean, I think everybody...
Yeah. Right. But the, the initial reason for having that was to go from being a bed and breakfast, which is permitted, to a hotel. All, yes, all the other things are, of course, part of it, and that need to be addressed. But to, to stop the economic growth because of parking, we all know it's an issue, and when you went into that, you know that area, welcome to, that's part of the usage. So, I don't understand, and I don't think it's fair for any business owner coming to the borough, that where there is a permitted use to be denied because of parking.
No, don't keep coming back.
It was never a bed and breakfast. It was, it was a bank, and it was never mentioned, a bed and breakfast in any areas.
That's not what I said.
Now, what he said was, a bed and breakfast is a permitted use in that zoning district. And not that they were presenting a, so that, I think they didn't even have to come to zoning, they could have probably just came into the borough and said, "We want to open up a bed and breakfast." There probably were zoning issues also, but I'm not a solicitor, so...
And I just want to say once again, to...
All right, so hopefully, I know nobody's leaving here 100% happy. Let's try to work through this. Give us some time to look at these parking issues, and see if we can come up with something, and maybe make everybody happy. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that ends public participation.
I just have one thing. Again, I've been getting many calls from people that would like to get a job or live at Mill Run. And I wanted to know if the website was up and running yet, because, like I said, I'm telling you, I had six inquiries last week alone. So, I need to, you know, give these people something.
Last week, the attorney for Mill Run...
Sorry.
...contacted the borough, and said that they are still working on the web page, and that they'll let us know as soon as possible.
Okay, and one other question, like, there's no name to this.
I don't know if they filed settlement on a name, you know?
All right, because someone else also asked me that, and I just wanted to say, there is no name at this point, you know, for this. And also, we were told that it was going to open January, is that what they said?
They were hopeful.
But now, I don't think it's going to be January. Just to let everybody know, it doesn't look like it's going to be January.
I'll do a second slide.
It looks incredible, one second. It looks incredible. I've been inside, I know I told you this before, but I have to say it again, it's going to be a state-of-the-art, beautiful place, and the outside is amazing. And the outside is amazing. I know they're spending a lot of money, but I don't want people to think that it's going to happen... Like, I will let people know, Greg will let people know, we will all let you know, as soon as this website is up and running. It's going to be all over Facebook, we're going to put it on the channel, correct? And we're going to blast it because I understand that people want to get jobs right now, it's really tough, people are in between jobs and all that. We're going to help you. Just, you have to be patient. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Rowan.
Alright, so, just so everybody at home knows, you know, I hear this constantly about Mill Run and when it's going to open. I also went into the building, and like Lorraine said, the building's gorgeous, there's marble floors, I mean, it's spectacular. I don't foresee this building opening maybe until next year.
I don't either.
I'll be honest with you.
I don't either.
So, if anybody's looking to get into the building this year or get a job or whatever, there's millions of jobs. I mean, everywhere you look, you see a sign, "Help Wanted." So, if people are looking for jobs, they can go get one. But people looking to move into this facility, and they're doing the best they can to get people in, it's just a big project. I mean, you know, you're talking millions of dollars and the agencies that they're dealing with and the different things they have to go through. I'm in construction. I know it's going to take them a long time to get this project up and running. If they finish tomorrow, I think it's still going to be six to eight months to get all their licenses in place and everything else. So, there's no sense in us keep trying to tell somebody... We only know what we're hearing. Like Lorraine said, they told us January, they told us August, they told, you know...
But I want people to know, I don't mind them getting ahold of me, I don't.
Right.
I want them to know that.
But we don't want anybody to think we're lying to them.
Exactly.
You know, we're hearing, she's repeating, or Greg's repeating, is what we're hearing to the borough. And I'm just giving you my own opinion, I don't think it's going to happen maybe the end of this year, but nothing before that.
And one more thing. Also, people are saying, you know, they'd like to work in their community. I get it. And they'd like to give back to their community and work in there. I know people that are nurses and wound care specialists, all these people that are saying, "I want to work, you know..." Keep working where you're working if you can, and when it's time, you know, there's going to be a lot of jobs open. I think they said 250, something like that. So, that's a lot of jobs. Thanks.
Anything else? Greg?
On the Mill Run topic, yeah, I would reiterate a lot of what was said, and that is, I think it's well documented that none of us are happy with the pace of the project. But at this point in time, I think we all can agree to that at least we know it's actually going to happen, right? I mean, that was a question I think some of us had for even a little while. I think you see the progress, and at this point in time, we're going to nudge, we're going to push, but I think the owners are going to open when the owners are ready to open at this point in time. And I don't know that there's much that we can do about that. So, we will keep on and keep asking, but it's going to be great, and we just got to be patient, as patient as we can be. I would also like to encourage, I know the mayor's not here and I forget the details of the text messaging application. Jim, do you know the details?
That's all.
Yeah. And the reason I say it in this context is because tomorrow is actually recycling. And I know, you know, first week, when you make a switch like that, there's going to be some confusion. We're moving, we moved it from Friday to Tuesday, and I know a number of people that I saw who knew, knew because they got the text message. You know, I think we've advertised it elsewhere, but it's a good service and it, you know, got people to be able to make that change very quickly. Yeah, so...
Eight-eight-eight-seven-seven, correct?
Eight-eight-eight-seven-seven.
Text it, you have to text it.
And you text, what do you text, Jim, again?
I have to get it.
Okay.
Eight-eight-eight-seven-seven.
It's, we put it on Facebook, we put it on TV, we're looking at putting a notice in the tax booth that will be yelling out, explaining, you know, how to sign up, so...
And I think we're trying to get signs made for all the restaurants, so when people come in, they can see it, and to explain to them if their car's parked. The biggest thing, if your car's parked in that flood zone and there's a flood, you will be notified immediately to move your car to higher ground. Anybody that parks and ever want to join this, but if you're not watching a council meeting, we're not getting the message across. So, we're working on the billboards around town, you know, the Bristol Borough boards, we're working on getting some signage down at the parking lot where it says, "Park at your own risk" to have this message to join. So, we're doing whatever we can to keep moving that in the right direction.
And not to beat a dead horse, but when I graduated from Penn State, I went to Temple to get my master's degree, and I lived in Mannion for a couple of years. And it was just at that time where Mannion was turning into this spot where, you know, this basically restaurant and hospitality destination. And I remember clearly struggling with the parking issues, and people who'd been there for a long time were concerned and rightfully so. And so, I would just like to reiterate that we all recognize up here that you have to juggle progress with the quality of life of our residents, and I don't think those two things necessarily need to be at odds with one another, and that we can, you know, figure these things out together, knowing full well that a lot of the people who want things to progress also want the quality of life to not only remain good, but improve. That's all I have.
Brian?
Recreation basketball was, the registration for that was put out, we got like 115 kids signed up, so it's going good. Like, I just wanted to put it on here that it is out, K through six, for people to sign their kids up.
That's great.
How much does it cost?
Not much.
Okay. That's great.
Good point. All right.
I really don't have anything, except I wanted to wish everyone a safe and happy new year. And also, thank you, Mr. Dillon and the Public Works people, Kevin, for the quick response every time I call with an issue, it gets taken care of, as well as Chief. Thank you. And that's it.
Louie?
The only thing, I'd just like to bring it up again about the recycling. It was mentioned here at last month's meeting, Mascara sent a mailer out to every property explaining this. Last week, there was tons of recycling now on Thursday, and sad part is some of it remained outside for, you know, over the weekend. And before you know it, it blows around, and I think one of the issues may be that some of our multi-units, maybe the landlords aren't getting this message out to the tenants. But if this continues, if people continue to put it out on the wrong dates, this is like the mattresses that I've always complained about, and the TV sets and computers, they get put out even though they're not supposed to be put out for trash, or they're supposed to be wrapped in a mattress bag. If this continues, I think we're going to have to take some steps to penalize the people that are putting the stuff out because it affects everybody in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And that's not fair. So, with that, hopefully, within the next week or two, this gets resolved. But if it doesn't, then we're going to have to resolve it. Thank you.
I also, I just want to add that I did forget, the north ward cleanup is now going to be townwide, so...
And what's the date, Maria?
April 15.
Okay.
Michael? Yes, first of all, I wanted to say to everyone, all the residents, happy new year. I also wanted to give a reminder that Councilor Tocchi already addressed that, please remember that the recycling day has changed. It's very important for you to know that. And if you do put it out by mistake, I know things happen, that you will take it back in and put it out on the correct day, which pickup is on Tuesday. So, again, that is a change. And again, I just wanted to, I am sensitive to the parking issue. I know it's something we all have to address. I am not denying that. And I welcome anyone that has any thoughts, they can contact me. Look, if there's, you may have a thought or an idea or something, we're taking all that into consideration. It's not just something we've been proactive on this. This is something that's been discussed after we came out of the COVID. You know, we realized that there's more people that are here that are staying as far as the residents, they're not traveling as much. So, it's just become an issue because of the residents and for the people that are coming in town. But what I will say again is, by all means, I don't think parking is a reason for us to take a step back and not accept and welcome roof. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty?
Yeah, Mr. Dillon, in November, right before Thanksgiving, we had a house fire on Bath Street, and I've been really sensitive to the fact that they had a house fire. The only problem I'm having is that now no one's allowed to enter the premises, and I know what the insurance is, and I know all that takes time. The problem I'm having is that it's disgusting because there's trash all over the sidewalk, bags, and a mattress right by the wall. And I know the lady's not living there with her family because they can't, it's been, there's a paper on the door, "No entry." But is there some way we can get someone to clean up the bags of trash? And obviously, there won't be no more trash for a while, or at least, you know, get in contact with somebody because it makes the rest of the neighborhood look really slummy, and we're not. And I don't like to live like that, and that's a few doors down from my house.
Alright.
I'll send you the address, I think you might know the address. And then, on this cleanup that Ms. Maria wants to do in April, just so in the past, people are more than welcome. It's just like we don't all have to be out there cleaning, but just so everybody in town knows, when it's the cleanup day, that's the time you can go out, clean, put trash out, and help beautify the town before the summertime comes. So, we'll stay on top of that, Maria, I'm sure is going to stay on top of that, but that's the time you want to all come in together and help clean up the town. That's it.
Chief, I apologize, I didn't go to you.
That's okay. I'll just be real quick. I just wanted to thank everybody sitting here and everybody at home who pushed through the quality of life issues that we worked on last year. I think everybody's doing a great job. Please, continue to keep pushing them to me so we can address them this year, abandoned vehicles, speeding and so on. And just two quick issues, I hate to bring it up again, the parking. But we had a couple issues. Just be mindful of parking too close to the corners. We have an issue with the, if you notice that the ambulances are much bigger now and the fire trucks getting down the streets. And the other issue was, there's a lot of construction on the streets in town, and it's been going on for months. Just be mindful of them workers that are out there, slow down a little bit and give them a little bit of a break. And happy new year to everybody. Thank you.
Thanks. Jay, anybody got anything for the chief? Alright, a couple things I have. One, we're trying to get, we went out to bid on, am I correct, an demand on roofs? I think it's due at the first week of February. So, every council person was asked to submit an area or a roof that you thought may need done, and our Public Works director also went out and looked at a lot of roofs. I mean, I don't have to read every road, but like, for instance, at Pond Street, from Beaver Street to Long Grove Street is going out for resurfacing. Otter Street, from Linden to Maple. Beaver Street, from Pond to Canal. Mulberry Street, from Pond to Rock Cliff. Jefferson, from Garden to Mansion. Lincoln, from Pond to Wood. Pine Grove Street, Bristol Street, Warren Street Alley, Bridle Pad, Plum Street Alley, Pearl Street Alley, alley next to Pond Street, Lake Street, and the parking lot at the Garden Parking Lot. So, we're trying to get a lot of paving done this year. If there's any other areas, see where these bids come in, we could add to it. The other thing we're discussing with council is, we want a couple projects to start as soon as possible. So, we're looking at redoing a lot of stuff at the ball fields, which we all discussed earlier. All new roofs on the dugouts, all new doors on the buildings, siding on the painting, everything gets repainted. So, we want to spruce that whole complex up for this year's baseball season. And then, we just had the roof fixed here, so now I think we finally got the leaks resolved. We want to move forward in painting the exterior of the building again because it's been sixteen years, right? Doesn't seem that long we've been tortured. But we're going to paint the exterior of the building and the entire interior of the building. And there's a lot of programs that the chief's working with the mayor to try to do stuff for kids this summer coming. I know Mr. Pezza and Mr. Johnson are working on some little kids' recreation that they're trying to implement. We have a recreation board now in place, I think they're meeting Wednesday at 6:00. So, I think everything's moving along. We keep moving the town forward. And look, we understand everybody has parking problems all over town, and we're trying to address them, so give council an opportunity to try to figure something out. Jim, anything?
Just a number of resolutions are on council agenda, a lot of things to deal with, obtaining the roof and all the authority funds. So, Patty signed this evening, 59 documents, and we're going to go with council's authorization.
Anybody else have anything before we get into the voting part of this meeting? Guys have anything? You're Amanda?
Just the current list, if you want to hear about that, but that's all.
Is that out the bid, or we got the bids?
We're awarding it tonight.
We're awarding it, okay. Anything else? Okay, let's start with our agenda, number two on the agenda.
President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the council meeting minutes for December 5th, 2022, and December 12th, 2022. Accept the treasurer's report for November 2022. Accept the fire chief's report for December 2022. Accept the inspection department report for December 2022. Accept public works department report for December 2022. Accept police department report for December 2022. Accept the Harv report for December 2022.
Second by Mrs. Collin. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, number three.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of resolution for borough approval of a liquor license for economic development for Drift LLC for 313 to 315 Mill Street in Bristol, PA.
Second by Mrs. Collin. Questions or comments?
Excuse me, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, number four.
Mr. President, I'd like to make an approval of ordinance amending Chapter 1, Section 1 slash 342 of the Bristol Borough codified ordinances to increase the number of recreation board members from five to nine.
Second by Ms. Collin. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve of the advertising adopting an ordinance to add the Commerce Park area of the borough to the West Ward.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Gorman. Questions or comments? Just so you know, where Commerce Park is, it was never put in anybody's area. So, the county wants us to now
Assign a ward to it.
Assign a ward to it, so it touches the West Ward, so it makes common sense to put it in that ward. And there's nobody that votes in that area, so... Alright? Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, number six.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of awarding the 2022 CDBG Design slash Build Curb Ramp Project to the lowest bidder, GNB Construction, for $129,800.
My, Mrs. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, number seven.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize a resolution for the acceptance of a municipal grant program contract awarded by the Redevelopment Authority for a public works dump truck in amount of 115 slash 450, I said that totally wrong, but I'd like to make that...
115,000.
Yes, 450. Sorry.
I have a second by Mr. Pezzetta, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd like to make a mo, a motion to authorize a resolution for the acceptance of a municipal grant program contract awarded by the Redevelopment Authority for a public works bobcat in the amount of $83,986.
Second by Mr. Caturchi, questions or comments?
Does he abstain from all this? Am I abstaining from all this?
Yes. I abstain on the first one, Mark. All the authorities, since I was involved in...
Yay.
...awarding the borough with the funds, I need to abstain. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and I abstain. Number nine.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize a resolution for the acceptance of municipal grant program contract awarded by the Redevelopment Authority for a public works pickup truck in the amount of $69,275.
Second by Ms. Cullen, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and I abstain. Number 10.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the resolution for the acceptance of the municipal grant program contract awarded by the Redevelopment Authority for police tasers in the amount of $10,568.
Second by Maria, Mrs. Gonzalez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and I abstain.
President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize a resolution for the acceptance of the municipal grant program contract awarded by the Redevelopment Authority for proposed police patrol vehicle acquisition in the amount of $70,561.
Second, second by Mr. Caturchi, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and I abstain.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize a resolution for the acceptance of the municipal grant program contract awarded by the Redevelopment Authority for fire department water rescue equipment in the amount of $44,176.
Second by Ms. Cullen, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and I abstain.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize a resolution for the acceptance of a municipal grant program contract awarded by the Redevelopment Authority for relocating essential fire and rescue communications equipment at Grundy Towers in the amount of $50,000.
Second by Mrs. Gonzalez, Figueroa.
Why you not calling Gonzalez?
Maria. I'm just paying, I didn't call first.
Doctor Hatcher used to call me Gonzalez.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I abstain. Number 14.
Mr. President, I'd like, go ahead, I'm sorry, no, go.
President, I'd like to authorize a resolution for the acceptance of a municipal grant program contract awarded by the Redevelopment Authority for the proposed Bucks County Rescue Squad ambulance acquisition in the amount of $158,178.
Second by Mrs. Figueroa.
Hey, good one.
I, I actually just have a comment, uh, that list that we just went through of, um, authorizing, 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 basically, we're authorizing the acceptance of a lot of money, um, I, I just want to congratulate, uh, people from this borough, namely, um, you know, people that are on that board, and people that advocate for that board of securing these funds, uh, for us, uh, you know, Ralph is the chairman, and, and my father's on that committee as well, and they certainly, I think, treat it fairly, but they certainly also strongly advocate for the borough, and as you can see in this list of, of grants that we received, uh, we appreciate what you guys do.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mrs. Cullen, second by Mr. Rodriguez. I cannot believe...